The Board of Education meeting for Springbrough School Systems for May 24, 2023. Roll call.
Back.
Here.
Suki.
Here.
Palate.
Good.
Here.
Swenham.
Here.
Stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. 1.2, is there a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
Second.
Roll call.
Back.
Yes.
Suki.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Swenham?
Yes.
1.4, approval of the May 10, 2023 meeting. Let's get that one. Oh, yeah. Is there a motion to approve April 26, 2023 meeting minutes?
Second.
Roll call.
Back.
Yes.
Suki.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Swenham?
Yes.
1.4, approval of May 10, 2023 meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
Second.
Roll call.
Back.
Yes.
Suki.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Swenham?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, tonight I am very honored to let you all know that our treasurer, Ms. Stacy, has been awarded the Auditor State Award, and because she's an amazing treasurer, I'm going to give her the Diamond Paculator Award. But honestly, less than 13% of school districts in the state of Ohio have received this award. And Ms. Stacy and her team, we are truly, truly fortunate to have you all because just the compliance, that you know 100% where all of our money is, and this community is in excellent hands with you. And all of your resources are particular, so we thank you, and just wanted to honor her as you all know.
We're happy with the right.
Absolutely.
Terry, did you put those on individually yourself?
Yes. No, thank you so much, and yeah, we're very excited all about sharing with you since we've got this award. So we're happy and we're hoping that me and my team are going to be back with Stacy again. I couldn't believe they are crazy, and without them, without everybody, I mean, I know there's a lot of compliance, there's a lot of rules, and a lot of processes and procedures that are never always fun, but everybody adhering to them and making sure that they're following them is how we're successful, and so I think everybody knows this shirt. It all takes everyone's time. But you know, here are what you need to do.
All right. 2.2, Springbrough Education Association. The certified employees, there's no public participation, correct? Any public participation on the agenda? So we move on. Work session. Looks like School Links presentation. Corinne.
Yeah, we have Corinne Center here from the high school, this is her first year as a guidance counselor on our team, and she has done an absolutely fantastic job this year. And one of the things that she brings to us, among many others, is the fact that she had worked with School Links in another district. And we were lucky enough that our Naviance contract was running out, and School Links kind of courted us as a district, and Corinne is going to be our lead on this because she has used School Links in the past. So she has a presentation for you tonight to give you some information with regards to what our high school students are going to be seeing next year and our high school futures. So we're really excited for you to be able to see the many different facets of School Links. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Corinne.
Thank you, thanks for having me tonight. I'll try and keep this short, sweet, but if you have questions, you still can help. The big thing I noticed when I started with Springbrough this year is that we use Naviance. It's old and a dying poor version of a college and career readiness platform. And you can ask any of the other counselors, I have grumbled about it all year. It was not user-friendly, it was very difficult to use, and just clunky. So we strictly used it for sending transcripts, for putting up our local scholarships, and it's used for seniors only. That's the only time I was in Naviance. So I asked the other counselors if they would be interested to hear about School Links. They were, they got to hear about it, they were excited about it, who submitted it to Andrea, kind of got very excited about it as well. What I like about School Links is it's not just for seniors. This is a true grades 9 through 12 college and career readiness platform, and you can just see a few things that we intend to use it for. Obviously, it will still take care of our transcript sending and a much easier process. Still can use our local scholarships post-grads. But the big thing I felt like Naviance was missing was students didn't always know what they wanted to go into, or they kind of had an idea of what school they wanted to look at, but they may not have the option of traveling, you know, to Bowling Green or University of Tennessee, it was three hours away. Their career interest inventory is one of the first things that students will do when they log into School Links. It is a very user-friendly one, you'll see it in a minute how that looks, and kind of starts them on that process of linking what they are good at, what they like to do, to potential careers. Because we all know if you're in a job you don't like, you're not going to stick with it. The college and career search feature on School Links is phenomenal. There are videos on there, there are pictures, it's very informative, it will break down, you know, what is the average ACT for a student's acceptance into this school. Tells you the cost, tells you the room number, and again, you'll get to see a few pictures of this. The next part was kind of like getting soul angry a little bit. As you know, this is our first year of the new graduation pathways, and there are the three main components we are tracking. Competency, which are linked to the intercourse assessments for Algebra, ELA 2, SEALs, and Credits. The SEAL tracking was very daunting this year. There are 12 different SEALs that we are trying to identify students qualify for. And Progress Book will identify what it picks for us. If a student is college-ready on the ACT, it'll automatically give them that SEAL credit. It's the only one it auto-checks for, so we manually have to check for the Science, Citizenship, Technology, Military, all 12 of them, we are manually checking for all of our students. At the beginning of the school year, this is our first year going through that process, we initially were just looking for the two they needed for graduation, but then as we get to graduation last weekend, we're like, you know, students have done a lot more than just those two, so we went back and rechecked for all of them. So when they got their diplomas and had their SEALs in their little envelope with them, it could have had, I think the most iCal was six for somebody in my case, like, now it could have been more. We have students that are really gung-ho about this and want all the both. There's no reason for it, there's nowhere on the diploma to put it, but they want it. So if they want it, they can honestly earn that. So that took a lot of time. This system will help us track that because it can look at the Biology, American History, Government scores and tell us if they qualify theirs, and then we'll be able to export that data into Progress Book, so it's auto-checking that course, and that's what's going to even us to the state of Ohio. So a big piece there of tracking that. It also will show students their transcripts so they can keep track of their credits. We get a lot of requests of, hey, can I see my transcript, can I see my transcript? And it doesn't, it takes a long time, but this way they have instant access to download that and always see an unofficial transcript for themselves and kind of keep track of themselves. So a huge piece of what we're hoping to really use that with the LEP for. Students can schedule appointments to see us with. We've changed our process of how to schedule with one of the district's counselors multiple times this year with the club, but they can do that through School Links. And then academic planning, they can also plan out their all four years at Springbrough. If they want to get to AP Biology their senior year, they can plan out the track courses to get there. And like I said earlier, it's used for all four grades at the high school. This is just all of the different things, and we actually took off some of the things we're not using School Links for of what it can offer. So it will have social-emotional learning lesson plans that we can utilize for these students. We are planning on each grade level will have a different track of what they're doing in School Links. We may be turning on some more of these, the more questioner-type things, and the spoken sequence for our underclassmen so we can kind of get a baseline of where they are. Obviously, we're using it heavily for college, career, and scholarships, but they can also track their service hours in there, which is linked to one of the 12 graduation seals, transcripts I kind of alluded to earlier, the National Clearinghouse reports, representative visits, so that's not just colleges and universities that can be the military or any jobs that want to come in and meet with our students. We'll list those there as well. Graduation tracking, you know, that also there's an initiative for every student to fill out the FASPA. Students, when they are filling out the information, when they're applying to colleges, have to check if they fill out the FASPA or not. We will be able to see that data that allows the counselors to potentially fold different events, I did that at my previous school, to help families complete the FASPA if that is a barrier for them. We can keep an eye on who has done it, who hasn't. We get reached out to by the local, or to by the colleges and universities if students haven't filled out the FASPA because it's not just me-based anymore, they have to have the FASPA just for a lot of their scholarships. College and Career Readiness Indicators, ILP is Individual Life Learning Plans for Students. That is new to me, that is not a feature I got to use last year, so I'm excited to see it at work, and you'll get to see a glimpse of it in a second. Industry Partners, Mr. Martin, Ms. Good, a lot of people send us things of different opportunities for students. We don't have a great way of getting that out because, believe it or not, our students don't check their email. So we could post those opportunities for them in School Links because we want them to be using this a lot. That way they can go see different job opportunities or internships, co-ops, opportunities they have for them. The next piece is a piece, again, I didn't get to see it and use this year, but there's an alumni commit. We have this post-graduation survey that we need to be sending out. School Links can help with that because they will become alumni after they use School Links and still have access to their account, so that is potentially one way we can get our postgraduate survey data back to us.
Can I ask questions?
Yeah.
And that would be free to go.
Yeah.
For the social-emotional learning, like, I know you said something would be different per grade level, but would that be like homework will be using that, or who goes in and is kind of responsible to make sure we're covering those things?
Right, so my hope is that we can do this during advisory period, and then once the students are completing those assessments, we, as the counselors, will be evaluating that data to look for any areas of concern and note that there's something we need to talk about.
Is advisory period with the counselor, or is that a homework thing?
It's a homework-type thing.
It's a homework-type thing, okay. Great, thank you. My other question is for the industry partnerships, is the workforce connected to this system? Or like, how do we get positions in there if a student was looking for something?
They can be, so that is not an area I got to do a ton last year because it was brand-new to me, but there's a way that they can have accounts involved in and post things there.
Are there other districts using this in the area?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, Edgewood is where I came from, and they're using it. Sycamore, I know, there's another one locally, and I can't think what it is.
Locota uses that.
Locota, okay.
I'm just curious because I want to work for the Warren County, and it's to do something like that, so I want to make sure if there's stuff that's already happening, that we're all on the same page, so this is great to know.
I definitely think this is taking over and got the Naviance off, you know, the stage. I think when they quoted us, they may have said 60 districts in Ohio are using it.
Okay. It's amazing.
It's very, very amazing, and this is even half a thing. Again, this is all of the different things I mentioned. This is that find-your-path that every student, the first time they log in, this is the first thing that they do. I like this, this is very student-friendly. They are swiping left, swiping right on these different, what's the word I'm looking for? Like, things that just describe them, and at the end, they will get a result, and it doesn't show it. They kind of link them to people with similar personalities, what career fields are linked to their lives and interests. That's the very first thing that everybody will do, and I think even when teachers log in, it wants them to do this as well. This is the college exploration. I wish that this was live, and I tried to get my account active so that we could actually log in tonight, but unfortunately, they didn't get it to me in time. When we log in to the college exploration portion, sorry, you can really make this what you're looking for. You want a small school, a big school, you want to be in Ohio, or you want to be in Florida. You tailor your search to what you're looking for. Maybe you don't have a clue and you're just looking for a specific career field, it'll also help you out. When you click on this, like I said earlier, it'll take you to videos of that campus, to student testimonials, and all the information.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Is our Career Center plug-in just?
They do not have School Links right now. Now, Nicole Panam, who was there, was with me last year, and Ashwood knows about it, so I'm sure she's trying.
There's a platform that was, it was provided for all working schools, but I think only Franklin uses it to just track their volunteer hours, and the rest of us aren't using it. It's not user-friendly at all, so it is being looked at county-wide for a system that is much, this looks amazing, and much more user-friendly, and what everything you're talking about is way more than this other system. Because maybe you ask it a different way, because obviously, we have a lot of the students that love it, and it just seems like it needs something to add, so we have interchange of.
Share the students, everything. Yeah, this will be Springbrough-specific, but I can ask our developer about it, but the Career Center students will still have the account because their counselors don't have access to the data. This is the big part for counselors, you know, and our big times in November and December, and that's what we've been doing for the last day and a half, is sending transcripts. When we look at this, we can see everyone, and these red Xs tell us there's something that needs to be sent or done. This will also take care of application waivers, you know, for student sneakers. It's all done through School Links. The best part of School Links compared to Naviance, when students link their Common App account, it automatically brings the colleges they've applied to over, where in Naviance, they have to add them individually. And it's, if they take one off their Common App, it can go far enough, so we're not sending stuff we don't need to. And it's seamless, where Naviance, like I said, very clunky, there's a lot of errors. It'll tell us if the FERPA is not signed, and we either call the students down and explain what the FERPA is, and they'll have to take care of that. This is where we spend a lot of our time, again, November, December, and at the end of this whole year, so we know what needs to be done. One thing with Naviance is we can only see our students and send stuff for our students. Well, sometimes things happen, and, you know, their colleagues, a student might sit down at my office because he's busy, I couldn't send any of their stuff or help them. I could only see my pieces, for this, I could see any of their stuff, which is very helpful. There's also the bulk send function, which would have been lovely the past two days because I could have bulk sent all the final transcripts, because you upload them at once, and it'll just send it. Where I was manually checking, I think I had 150 seniors that I had to go through and look up each kid individually and figure out where they were going and send it. This takes care of that for me, it's all in there. All right, the College and Career Readiness Tracker, this is looking at those different graduation pathways. What's neat about this is once the data is pulled in, we can see how many of our Springbrough students have earned the Science Seal, have earned the Citizenship Seal. We'll have all that data, it'll all be there, we can export that, like I said before, and it helps us just kind of know what areas we need to work on. The Career Exploration, I love this one for working with students. A lot of times, students know they want to go into electrical engineering, or they know they want to be a nurse or have some idea, maybe it's a really out-there job, I don't know now. You can type that in there, and it'll link you to four-year, two-year, or trac-isms that have that, and you can help them, you know, understand, these are your options in Ohio, these are your options out of state. It also, I don't know when this data was pulled, but we'll show you the most job openings in a specific state. So nursing in Texas, well, there's a price there. But I also love if there's early childhood education on there as well, so we can see, these are the in-demand jobs at the time, and students can use that as they're trying to figure out what they want to do with the rest of their lives. Worth-based learning and volunteer opportunities, again, another platform for us to post opportunities for students. We get emails from the local hospitals and things, and then post them there so the students know they can go there to find different opportunities for volunteer opportunities. That's a big piece applying to colleges or applying to be in the national honors society, so that would be very helpful. The FASPA reporting, this is what it looks like on the student end, and then we can track that data. This is our view of it, so we know who has filed, who hasn't filed, who needs some help. A lot of times, a simple phone call from the counselor to financial aid at Miami can help facilitate some of the questions they have, and that is a great way for us to track that. Experience hours, that is, this is not the volunteer, this is internships and different things. Again, all can be tracked in here. This was fun, Andrea and I had fun looking at this because you could kind of decide what do you want when you're an adult. I think it said you could pick how many hamsters you want, and it tells you how much it costs to have a hamster or a different baby, and it's just fun for students to play, and I'm hoping it's fairly accurate, and understand what is the cost of living, you know, because I think that's shocking to a lot of students. The Individual Life Report, you're saying, again, this is new to me. I'm excited to see this part and, you know, have students truly get in here and understand, this is for you. They get to sign up on it, they approve, they plan, but this is not an area that I'm super familiar with yet. Lesson plans, learning modules, so we, when we get started, we'll probably spend some time in our early August looking at this group sequence of deciding what is the order we want things to occur. We've started to look at each month, what are the different areas we'd like to talk about. Obviously, beginning of school year, we're looking at college, college applications with our seniors. So planning that out so that it's done, and there's advisory periods. There's different videos and learning modules students can do. This is kind of our new feed for a counselor. We will get this active feed that will show us what our students are doing, so we know that they're in there. It'll show us what needs to be completed and what's coming up. Student case files, so we can look at our students. This is the representative visits, just there, where we would post all of that so that they know where they're coming and they can sign up for those. Another cool feature is that when they put all of this information into School Links, it will generate a resume for them that they can actually download and do like. They may know, like, the format, but it'll have a lot of the information on there that's important for them to put into a resume or a portfolio. All right, so I'm going really fast, what questions do you have? That's everything that is on this slideshow.
Is this Ohio's, is there anything in here that's Ohio-specific, or is all of it because of the SEALs?
The graduation plan portion is an Ohio-specific thing that we are purchasing to be a part of School Links.
Got it. So it's a national thing, but you're just like, you're speaking of all of them?
Yeah.
So will that also help you connect to the standards that you were talking, you were, what was that?
Competency.
With the lesson plans and learning modules, you had said, yeah, with competencies.
Yeah.
Is that, like, is the Ohio, are the Ohio's, are the Ohio's already in there?
The CCR portion is strictly on the graduation requirements, the competency for Algebra, ELA 2, everything. So the other stuff is separate.
I'm with you, okay, great, thank you. This is amazing. So what's your, what's your plan to do to roll it out to all four classes next period?
So counselors will go through training first. We're hoping to get our initial onboarding training done next week so that we can play with it. Thankfully, we'll be having some knowledge, hopefully that will speed it up a little bit. Cheryl Winter just reached out to me, I would be leading a training for staff with Dana Mitchell during our PD day, so that all of our high school teachers will have an account, and they'll be able to get in here as well. And then we will roll it out through the advisory periods at the high school.
All four years, like, graduate will start. How will you make connections then to the kids going to the Career Center?
We, we go to those monthly meetings. I went to, I think, oh, I started to do one last month, so I can make sure they have such to know about that. Make sure they're going to call it in there because it's linked to their real accounts, so they just need to log into their accounts.
Could we see it possibly, because we have personally, Chris, and her just to help with, like, internships, the all extracurriculars, that type of thing, could we see if we can partner with them to help feed that?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you thinking, I'm also waiting right now?
Vaughn.
Who am I thinking of with the internship that we were working with? It's maybe pre-apprentship.
Would the date with?
No.
No.
Yvonne.
Yvonne.
That's what it is.
Yeah.
That's, that's exactly what I was thinking before. If she's doing it for our county and work hard, it's cool.
Yeah, I think if she just shared that information, we can make sure it gets uploaded in there.
Okay, okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Good luck. Thanks.
Ms. Good.
Right. I am seeking a request for the purchase of smart boards for elementary and secondary education. We were looking, again, at clever touchboards for elementary on parts and smart boards for secondary classrooms mounted on walls. So back when we had our retreat, you had, where do I want to put it? You had approved the $100,000 purchase to speed up so that I don't have to be multiple times a year asking for smart boards. So this is our first round of requests for smart boards for next year. Our hope is to be able to get these on July 1PO and have them installed for our teachers so that when they come in August, that we have trainings for them and that they can get the students ready in their classroom to utilize the interactive boards on day one. So that is the plan. Any questions on this? The first round of smart boards with the large purchase, again, thank you very much for your support on this project.
Mr. Gilbert.
Mr. Board President, members of the board, this is a standard process with the Educational Purchasing Council and just allowing us the opportunity to utilize their bid process. Being a council of governments, it provides us an opportunity to use multiple types of funding when we're purchasing buses or vehicles. In addition to that, there's leverage in numbers, so it's, you know, a group of school districts that go together, and so it helps a little bit certainly to lower the expenses. So this is just a standard protocol that allows us to do that. Currently, we do not have any plans to purchase buses for this coming year, but you never know. So we want to make sure that we're on the list.
Thank you. 3.5, do you have any commission? Any new business? Terry.
All right. Item 4.1 is the approval of the 5-year forecast. I did a presentation at the last board meeting, and work session, so that's on for approval tonight. It has to be filed by E to go to E as. Sorry, some stuff, I should keep in there. Item 4.2 is the approval of the April 2023 financials. Item 4.2 is the approval of the April 2023 financials. Just the detail of financials are obviously a little bit off to review, just a couple highlights. We did receive just over $1.8 million for our general fund for April. Of that 2.5 million was due to our November county and one of the new state tax settlements, which is, you know, we sit down after the summer of the year. We already received lowback and homestead in the month of May, but that was a part of the financials for April. The other revenue for April was 1.2 million state funding and another $34,000 this time in revenue. Our expenses are running typical for this second year, what we normally see. April 5th K was a little bit higher, you notice on the financials, and that was due to us paying out the athletic contracts for the final winter payments for supplementals, the first half of spring supplementals, and the final supplementals would be what we paid on June 5th K, so it's a little bit higher than April. Some of our other funds, we had 581,000 in expenditures in April for all of the funds. Of that, 260,000 of those expenses were grant funds that we're spending now. Our student yield balance account in our O6 fund is now at 23,631, so we have a really healthy balance and there are some students who might be helped with their student account. And we did receive a 280,000 towards our PI, about 84 in Warren County, the month of the county settlement, so we did spend 84,000 in the month of April for the night expenditures. So we did close April at just over 18.8 million, 2.213 days of cash on hand, and it still misses the beginning, has to be a round 83 days of cash on hand in the course of two. So we're still running on target for what's in the forecast now for the end of the year. And so that's item 4.1. So unless anyone has any question.
The vote on that separately. Is there a motion to accept 4.1 and 4.2? Somebody?
Second.
Roll call.
Ab.
Yes.
Stewie.
Epstein.
Olaj.
Yes.
Yes.
Should I come?
Yes.
Then I have a slew of other things. Item 4.4, approval of the environment on club as an activity, and 4.5, approval of the two alley interact club as an activity. I remember those in the work session last time as well. Item 4.6, a $12,000 donation from the high school stat, activity to go to those listed donors, which are $200 towards student reading at the high school media center, $500 to the SBA's, $500 to the state's financial account. Item 4.7, a donation of $150 from the Capitol County to the student dual balance fund. Item 4.8, approval of a donation of $400 from the JR Mrs. and Boosters Tours to go to the JR program. Item 4.9, approval of a $50 donation from 4AMRT from the high school musical department. Item 4.10 is approval of a gift card, the pricing will be more than $40 a year. An approval of a gift card to a house ball valued at $1.2709, meaning it's free to all of our teacher at Dennis Elementary School in Bella. And if it goes over $25, the license process has a different floor level, so the high school administration goes, okay. Item 4.11, approval of a donation of $1,000 from the military order to become a part of the JR program. Item 4.12, approval of a donation of art supplies, $1,000 to children young, music, and elementary.
Take a breath.
All right. I'm sorry to go fast.
Further questions? Is there a motion to accept 4, 4.4 through 4.2?
Second.
Way to go.
Ab.
Yes.
Stewie.
Yes.
Olaj.
Yes.
Should I come?
Yes.
5.1 and 5.2 were discussed by Craig a long way back in the last work session, pay-to-pay, pay-to-participate fees, and a pay-to-go to the athletic classes.
All right, is there a motion to accept 5.1 and 5.2?
Second.
Any questions? Roll call.
Ab.
Yes.
Stewie.
Epstein.
Olaj.
Yes.
Good. Should I come?
Yes.
5.4 is the second reading of all the policies that you all might have read, each one, and not the summary.
That's why I was.
Okay, and 5.5, this is, this is the part of the, so I am recommending to you all during your special education and read your contract for Sarah Gershner. And I just want to say some things about each contract that I'm bringing to you because we worked hard this year to really form our team and I evaluated, we did a lot of reflection together and we did evaluation. So I just want you all to know that these recommendations are solid and I wanted you to know a little bit about like what I was thinking. Sarah, her work ethic and devotion to Spring Borough is second to none. She's determined to make a difference for each and every one of our students. In front of her evaluation, I said, she's a crucial part of my administrative team. I'm confident in her abilities to perform her duties and lead her department with strength and vision. She's highly competent in all areas of the rubric, but she's committed, she's very committed to her professional career. So I recommend Sarah for a three-year contract. A three-year contract recommendation for the director, the executive director of business operations, Mr. Scott Gilbert. And he is doing so much with so, to ensure that our building's ground, equipment, and operation and personnel are moving forward. He has such patience and he has such a confidence with whatever problem comes our way. He is respected, seen wide in his position. And from his evaluation, I said that his level of expertise and solid ability to make decisions for the district is what every superintendent wants to build this of her team around. Principal for 5 Points Elementary, I am recommending Alicia Jump for a three-year contract. We are not going to find anybody with more passion and energy for students at staff than Alicia. She has the biggest heart and the biggest spirit that just wants to give and give all the time. She continues to learn and grow her role and is determined to serve each and every staff member and student in the building every single day, to the point that yesterday I was taller than she should go to stand for. And with, it is with much excitement that I recommend Mr. Tyler Lotzve for a two-year contract with any principal at Spring Borough Junior High. It's a huge loss for 5 Points and it brought many tears, but it's a, this room was filled with a lot of joy when we announced him as the leader here at Junior High. He's exactly what is needed to rebuild this culture here and the staff and Mr. Lotzve are ready for the challenge and they're super excited. So it's with a lot of respect and excitement to watch him grow that I recommend him for a two-year contract. I didn't know, you wanted to say anything?
No, I'm just grateful for the opportunity. This building has been special to me. I attended here as a sixth grader all the way through eighth grade. I did have some of the staff members, but it's always been a special place to me. So to have the opportunity to come back is something I'm extremely looking forward to and I'm really excited for next year. So I really appreciate Carrie and Matt giving me the opportunity to do this. And I also want to say one other thing about Alicia Jump. I'm thankful for her leadership and her training. I feel like she put me in a position where I'm ready to do this, so I'm forever grateful for her. I couldn't agree more with Carrie's thought.
And finally, I am coming to you this evening to recommend Mr. Matt Tutter as our new deputy superintendent. It is rare that a superintendent can build a team around a partner such as Matt. His impact in just 10 months cannot be adequately described. It is with confidence that I recommended him for this title and the responsibility factor that he's going to take on. He is an impact player for the district. He will work alongside me to ensure that we will continue to focus on organizational effectiveness in order to be committed to the academic excellence for each and every student. And he is ready to begin this learning joint journey because one day, when he grows up, he wants to be a student. So those are my contract recommendations to you all.
All right, is there a motion to accept 5.4 through 5.5?
Seven.
Any discussion?
I got a second.
Any discussion?
I'll say, first of all, Carrie, I wish you were doing my evaluations. Very kind things to say, but in all seriousness, I mean, you're one of the individuals that's getting their role or Mr. Lotzve that's, you know, coming to Junior High. So thankful you're, you're in our district and I've seen with my own eyes the impacts that you have on students and staff, so, you know, I'm super excited that.
I want to say the same thing about Carrie. Thank you for just the summary. It really is neat to hear some of the, what was highlighted in the evaluations and to just know the confidence that we have in those that we are voting on tonight and those people that we aren't voting on tonight, just happen to not be on the agenda. But you guys are just doing an absolutely outstanding job, you know, when, when there's conversations, there's so many more positive conversations right now because of the way that our, our district is, is being led. So thank you for all that you've given and adjusted when we needed to make adjustments. So this is an exciting vote for me. And Tyler, I have to say, Tyler, it was the neatest thing to watch social media happen after that announcement was made because there was just so much excitement. And the only negative that I heard was that the 5 Point students won't have him there. And if that's going to be the negative, like, wow, right? So thank you for all that you've done through, from when I knew you had done this elementary. It's just neat to see your, your, you move up in the district and just your heart for Spring Borough. And I just think you're very fortunate that you've chosen to maintain your, your professional role here in Spring Borough, so please don't leave.
Tyler's the first, I've been here a long time. Had a lot of students come through and athletes that I coached, and I think he's the first one that I can say has moved up into an administrative position. So glad to have you and good luck.
Thank you.
All right, who do you vote?
Ab.
Yes.
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 Should I come?
Yes.
Just word president. Your new, doesn't have your new office. Can't put it on.
Mr. Board President, members of the board, I come for tonight's approval for the 2024-25 school calendar, as we talked about in the work session, you know, as we shared, in the classification paper, creation. Item 6.2, we talked about this in the work session, you are seeking approval for the job description for your administrative services and grants for the next quarter as well. I have 6.3. It's my honor to really talk about this, I mean, Sarah and her department, you heard a little bit about the leadership that Carrie talked about, for Sarah, she ran a fantastic process to select our next elementary special education coordinator. And we're thrilled that it's someone who knows our community very well, knows how our schools operate, both as a teacher and parent, and is going to come and serve our administrative team. So it's an honor for us to recommend Nicole Javon Scott for this position. Item 6.4 is the administrative contract for Tracy Bivin, continuing her role as elementary coordinator. Item 6.5 is for Kyle, continuing this role as assistant athletic director. I'm taking my question from now. Yeah. I was going to.
Just go ahead.
I don't like any of them. I'm thick as a hawk in this. We went through this thing. And then item 6.6, I do want to say, a little bit about Heather as well. I talk to Heather on a daily basis. She has really stepped up this year in certain things that she's been put in. And I think there's going to be a silver lining to this for her because along with taking on the responsibility, you know, our decision to put other leadership here to support has given her an unprecedented growth because our other leaders come in here and saying, well, why are you doing this if you're putting that in that? And it's just kind of, you know, it's just, and like I said, she's just not only the drop this year and, you know, for a long time. Do you think her job is going to be great? Then item 6.7 is our personal approval.
Is there a motion to accept 6.1 through 6.7?
Tell me.
Second. Any discussion? Roll.
I was going to say.
Roll call.
Ab.
Yes.
Stewie.
Sting.
Olaj.
Yes.
Good. Yes.
Should I come?
Yes.
Ms. K.
Mr. President, members of the board, I am seeking approval for the 2024 school fees for all six buildings, the approval of textbook adoptions in grade six through eight, as well as biology, our student handles for all six buildings, and the purchase of interactive boards for elementary and secondary classrooms.
Is there a motion to accept 7.1 through 7.4?
Seven. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Ab.
Yes.
Stewie.
Yes.
Olaj.
Yes.
Good. Should I come?
Yes.
Thank you for your support.
Mr. Gilbert. Mr. Board President, members of the board, coming for your approval of a new time clock system for 5 Points Elementary. Since Mr. Lotzve is leaving, we thought we would upgrade that building a little bit, but no, it's something we discussed in the work session, so it's very desperately needed out there. And then 8.2 is the approval of electric bleacher conversion. That will happen out at Dennis Elementary School. That is part of district funds as well as youth athletic organizations helping us through that process. That will certainly help them pull out the bleachers and be a lot more efficient process. And then item 8.3 is what we just spoke about with the Southwestern Ohio Educational Purchasing Council, with the bus purchasing bid process.
Is there a motion to accept 8.1 through 8.3?
Seven. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Ab.
Yes.
Stewie.
Yes.
Olaj.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Should I come?
Yes.
Any further announcements?
First class is cool.
That's right. More members, go ahead.
Congratulations again. I think it's still awesome. That's kind of, so we answer you, so we appreciate that. Congratulations to all the graduates. It was so much fun to dedicate my first graduation. A lot of fun. And I didn't realize it until like later on, but somebody I've looked at in my district, I gave her my anniversary. Here we go. I know, I was like, so. And the other thing, I think it's really neat that we are going to easy schoolings at the high school. I think that will really streamline across us, just because it's a lot.
It'll save a lot of time.
Yeah. A lot, like, a lot of, especially like, charging graduation fees, so I'm excited to see that. And just thanking to all the teachers and staff that help in our district. The more I spend, the more I can tell.
I also am super excited about the schoolings. I just, I had no idea there was even a tool out there like that, so that's been amazing help having three graduates. I just think I love that. I think we're offering families so much more in ways that they can partner with the school and the school and just give them more tools in their chest, so that was awesome. And graduation, I wish Kyle was still here. There was, that was such a seamless event. I mean, it, we, it took us, like, maybe quite a bit longer at the career center if we have half the number of students. I mean, it was just, it was so well done to that whole team, but yes, special. Like, I talked to somebody at the gym this morning and I said, so what were your thoughts? And it was the first, first graduate. And he was like, it was an amazing night. So the students didn't feel that they didn't have the time and it was just a quality, quality evening, so that was awesome. I just want to take a minute to thank those of you that came around and supported our two grad, the families of our two graduates that we lost this weekend. That's a hard, hard situation and when I reached out to Carrie and just seeing what you guys did to help the staff and the students and even the siblings that came to school this week, I just appreciate, it just shows the heart of Spring Borough and that's usually when Spring Borough shines, is when we're kind of in a crisis and that's what we're seeing in the community. It was just really comforting to me to know that our kids here in the district and our staff here were also being taken care of and just keep those families in there. Just keep those families in our thoughts and prayers as this weekend's going to be a tough time for a lot, a lot of people. The last thing was just like an overall appreciation of our administration and the commitment that we have. I don't, you don't see everywhere and the true, and I'm just going to name Jimmy. I think that, you know, we talk about PBIS and restorative practices and I will tell you, I have seen that live out in him this year and, and I know he's not the only one. He's just the one that I had experience with. And I just, that makes you, whether, wherever we are in the process, but to know that there are people that are doing these things every single day because that's what's right for kids. So I just have been encouraged by seeing some of that. I want to say thank you to Matt. You've stepped into, you know, a lot and there's been a lot of difficult situations and just, you know, hearing how you walk through it, when to support the staff and whether it's the staff that might need individually some support or the people around, you just have done a great job. So congratulations on your debut superintendent, but it is very welcome that you've stepped into a new community and done a great job. And Tara, I know that there's a lot with the treasures award and your team, you know, I have friends in other districts and this is not typical, but every school district has somebody like Tara and the team around. There are board members that are not at all confident with the finances in the district and I said, truly, in my eight years here, I've never had one concern. And you just do such a great job of explaining it to those of us that aren't finance people, but to really so we understand enough and then those two can understand it more. So just congratulations on that and for you two and the rest of you for an amazing year. I think this has really been a great year getting out of, pretty much out of COVID and just back to normal. So my perspective has been a great year, so thank you. I'm done.
Awesome. So yeah, I'll start with also congratulating Tara. I mean, I think I was, you know, hoping for a fourth right here. I think you should have been getting that every year and it was extremely disappointing that they didn't see it our way, but you know, finally got the recognition they deserve for a long time, so. Can't say it any better than what we said anyway. We always have high confidence in what you deliver to us and I've also read the newspaper and there's some districts that aren't as fortunate as we are, so thank you for everything you do for us on a daily basis. You know, I think the other thing I'll say to Kerry is, you know, you've built a world-class administrative team, so it makes our jobs, I think it makes all of our jobs easy, when we approve these contract extensions, as well as when you bring in new world-class talent. It's very easy to feel good about everyone we're extending. Super excited to see, you know, with the next several years, bring, as we can build a heck of a team and our students are definitely coming, so thanks. And I guess nothing else, you know, for the teachers, the staff, the administration, you know, enjoy your summer. It's been a great school year and it's been a good time off, so get a summer.
Yeah, I would agree with everything. Sorry I was late and wasn't officially able to congratulate you on that or the agenda of the work, but yeah, just echoing what everybody else says in terms of the level of support that you provide, us more than the district and general stuff. Greatly appreciated. Yeah, I was saving my comments on all of the administrative contracts and I told you to do it all at once, but what other board members have said, you know, I just, I think we have a great team that's been assembled here and I'm just appreciative of all of the work, but a lot of it goes unseen that you guys put in to make this district run as successfully as it does. And so I just, it's a pleasure to be able to approve these contracts and just really enjoy working with all of you and happy of the team that we've assembled here and we're able to keep the momentum going. So just wanted to extend my thanks and I just can't believe that we're coming to the end of another school year. So thank you to our administrators and teachers and staff and to everybody that I've really put in a great deal of work to make this year successful as any other year we've had in the years of the world. So we really just appreciate all the hard work and effort. Thank you to all the long list of donations. You know, Tara doesn't enjoy reading them all, but it's great to show some support from our community and so just thank you to all of those people. And then, yeah, I was gonna also thank Mr. Martin, who was here, he looked a lot more relaxed, sort of being on this side of graduation, but it's a, I agree, it was a great ceremony. So to all of the team that was able to make that such a successful event, thank you. And I know it did mean a lot to everybody that was able to attend and event very smoothly and share, that is probably the best thing that we can do as board members, is to be a part of that ceremony and share that day with those families. So thank you to everybody that made that a success. That's it.
Single, single here, I want to thank Marina for her presentation. I met her for the first time at graduation the other night. She did her part pretty well. Thanks to all the donations that came in. Want to congratulate, obviously, everybody that got contracts, extensions, as well as new ones. Wanted also, like Lisa mentioned, keep the family of those two graduates of ours in our prayers because when I heard about it, I was afraid it was somebody that just graduated that night. Just anytime you lose somebody, it's terrible. Also, as far as athletics, I think we still have some people, we got tennis going tomorrow with the Douglas team, any single. We have some of the tracks still going and baseball's playing, is it tomorrow? Regionals against West Claremont, I'm not sure where they're going to come to that. So everyone, that's the Coach Pelfris team has done that like twice in the last four or five years, made it to the state not here, so hopefully with this win, we'll be going again, so. I believe that's it. Everybody have anything else? All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Seven.
Bash.
Yes.
Rajay.
Yes.
Yes.
Should I come?
Yes.
We are adjourned. Thank you.